Meeting of Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I’m the Chair of this committee. And we’re joined today by a quorum of members, including Councilmember Kano, Reich, Bender, Yang, Quincy, Worsami, Frye, and Palmasano. As we begin, I’d like first to make a motion to amend the agenda to include an item that was not on the printed agenda. This will be added as item number four. And it will be an update on the Workplace Regulation Partnership with a short presentation provided by Casey Carl. And then we will move item number four on Enterprise Land Management System to item number five. So we’ll have two discussion items then. And so with that motion, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that item is approved. We have amended the agenda. First, we’ll go through our consent agenda items. The first is referring to staff. The ordinance that was introduced on Friday, the 23rd, which is amending Title II of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances relating to administration, adding a new Chapter 40 entitled Workplace Regulations relating to paid time off and earned sick time. Item number two is referring to staff. The Finance Internal Control Program Consultation Memorandum of the Internal Auditor with direction to report back with a management response to findings, if any. And item number three is another similar item. It is referring to staff. The Records Management Audit Report with direction to report back to this committee with a management response finding to the audit findings, along with recommendations, if any. So with that, I will move the consent agenda and see if anyone has discussion on any item. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And those items are approved. Next, we turn to our new item, number four, which is a short presentation on the Workplace Regulations Partnership. And I want to thank Mr. Carl for asking to be part of our agenda. I think part of the intent here is to ensure we have more clear information about the application process for the Workplace Regulations Partnership. And as a note to my colleagues, with the action that we took on October 23rd, this committee will review a potential slate for approval to the Workplace Regulations Partnership at our next meeting of the Committee of the Whole on November 18th. So I will turn it over to Mr. Carl to walk us through a short presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. And thank you again for allowing this late submission to the committee’s agenda, the tight time schedule that goes along with getting these appointments. Made it so that staff wanted to present this information. We hope it pleases the committee that we are here to summarize some procedures related to the appointment of this newly-created Workplace Regulations Partnership Group and also highlight some initial operating principles that will guide the working group’s efforts once those members are appointed. As this committee is aware, the partnership was created in the last cycle as an ad hoc working group that was specifically tasked with studying and developing policy recommendations related to earned, sick, and paid time off. The partnership is to be composed of 15 members, and members must represent or be members of one or more of four specific stakeholder groups. Specifically, these groups are employees or representatives of employees, specifically including low-wage earners, representatives of organized labor, employers, or representatives of employers, including both large and small employers, as well as immigrant-owned businesses, and representatives of business groups and associations. The members will be appointed by Mayor Hodges. Three, two members will be appointed by Council President Johnson. The remaining 10 members then will be appointed to the partnership by the full city council. And those nominations are to be brought before this committee at its next regular meeting, as the Chair mentioned, on November 18th, which is two weeks from today. Because the working group is not a permanent board or commission, its membership is not subject to the open appointments process. However, staff has recommended that we model the processing of these appointments on those established procedures. Therefore, we’re asking that all individuals interested in being considered for appointment to this Workplace Regulations Partnership Group send the following details to the clerk’s office: their name, residential address, phone number, and email address, and identifying which of the four stakeholder groups they would represent if appointed.
Mr. —
This is what I’ll call the minimal level of detail that we would want to have in order to process the appointments. In addition, we’re asking for an additional personal data. We’re asking that interested individuals also submit a letter outlining their interest in serving on this working group, along with their relevant qualifications that would add value to the work of the partnership team. That might include, but not be limited to, their education, experience, and other matters. We also suggest that individuals submit with this letter a current resume, however, that’s not required. The intent we have is to provide as much information as possible to enable the council to make informed decisions about these appointments. I know each of you have already had contacts from interested individuals and from groups. So if you believe that additional data would be helpful, we’ll certainly accept it, and we will include it in the package that is provided to all council members for their consideration.
So, Mr. Carl, I just wanted to interrupt you with a question. And I want to say to my colleagues, if you have questions, we want to accommodate, you know, as much as is able to be answered by Mr. Carl. Thank you for noting that the resume piece is not required. Will there be some notation that indicates that that’s not required, or something that kind of substitutes for that, you know? And I just say, because of the stakeholder groups that we have invited, not everyone has a resume, nor may all your resume information really be relevant
Right.
... to serving on this group, which is more about, A, what is your interest? So that we can evaluate what’s the interest, and then what experience you bring that would be most relevant to serving on a group of this type. So maybe you could respond to that.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that observation. Yes, we did not want to require a resume, but suggest that a resume may be helpful to complement. A letter of interest, or an email, a fax, that indicates the primary information we need: the personnel details about name, address, phone, email, which stakeholder group they identify, and then an explanation of why they’re interested and what perspective they bring to that table, what would add value to the work of the partnership team, I think is most helpful for the council. We in the clerk’s office will then package all of that information and put a cover on top of it that indicates by name, by stakeholder group, and what information was submitted to us to be provided to you.
There is a couple of questions that we have on this slide. I think Councilmember Frye was first, and I am — I’ll just note to you, I think the clerk is helping us set up the speaker management, so we can use that, too. So, Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Carl, I just wanted to fully understand how the process works. So names are submitted. There’s a procedure in which by their — through which they’re submitted, you know, whether or not the resume is included. And you also mentioned that it should include the position, in other words, what side they are of the issue. During the previous council meeting, we had decided that there should be equal representation by both workers as well as businesses, or balanced representation. You’re shaking your head. What’s the difference between equal and balanced? I don’t know.
Madam Chair, the question is about the final disposition of the motion that was adopted. And I did include in your packets, for reference, a copy of the motion as it was adopted. And it wasn’t an equal balance of membership. The motion that passed was that the membership was to be balanced, not a seven-seven.
Okay. Well, okay. So the difference is, it doesn’t need to be seven-seven and one. It could be five-five and four, or whatever the remaining number is. Is that — so that’s correct? So, but still, it’s an equal — it’s an equal balance of representation between proponents and opponents? Is that what you’re saying? Whereas, there’s a remaining amount of people, like, I don’t know, academics, or lawyers, or whatever it is, that can help implement the policy once it’s in place.
Madam Chair, I think the intent of the council’s motion was that the membership would be balanced. It’s up to the council to make that decision as they make those 10 appointments. And that’s why we’re suggesting that if the members who are interested in appointment identify which of those four stakeholder groups they represent, it will help you, as the policymakers making those appointments, to reach consensus on how those members will reflect a better balance amongst the four stakeholders.
Okay. And does it have to be among those four stakeholders?
Madam Chair, that is correct.
So, thank you, Mr. Carl, because I just wanted to reiterate to my colleagues what was the motion that was made and passed on Friday. The motion did articulate the stakeholder groups. So as an example, it doesn’t say lawyers, although if someone was a lawyer, and really they were representing an employer, perhaps they could be appointed. It doesn’t mention academics. But again, if you’re really representing an employer, however, that would work.
I mean, I —
The resolution did talk about these groups of employers, and employer representatives, and workers, and labor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I asked the question, is this specific individual that I’m thinking of in this case is an employment attorney, but is actually on the worker’s side? It’s a plaintiff’s attorney.
Again, I guess it’s an interpretation of the resolution, and I’m sure we will get a large number. I’ll just tell you, from my perspective, we’re already getting a large number of interested folks, and I’m sure it will be a hard decision for all of us to pick how many we’re able to pick, knowing that Council President has two appointments, the mayor has three appointments, and then there are 10 that the council as a whole gets an opportunity to vote on. So.
Yeah, just a little bit more. And, okay, so that makes sense. So then, and once the — so the submissions are then given to you, and the staff come forward with ultimately a recommendation that then council votes on? Is that how this works?
Madam Chair, that’s my next slide. Perhaps I could move forward?
Well, we still have a few more questions, so maybe we’ll hold that question unless you have others on this slide. And then we have a couple more councilmembers. Thank you. Okay. And Councilmember Yang, I think, had actually had his little red thing up. And then Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Yesterday, maybe the day before, we received an email with nominations. And I’m just wondering, you know, with regard to that, I mean, if they don’t follow our procedure, I would imagine those folks would not be qualified. I mean, is that correct?
Madam Chair, to clarify, the clerk’s office is not making any decisions about whether an individual who submits an application is or is not qualified. We will accept any applications that are submitted to our office, whether it comes directly to the clerk’s office, whether it comes through the mayor or a council member’s office. We’ve asked that policymakers submit that to us, so that we then are capable of putting together a comprehensive list of all people who have submitted applications. And the decision about determining who gets appointed would rest with the council.
Right. And, Ms. Carl, I mean, maybe I didn’t ask that correctly, but let’s just say, you know, it’s an association that sends an email to all the councilmembers, basically saying, John Doe and Jane Doe should be a part of this workgroup. But, you know, there is no resume, there is no cover letter, there’s nothing like that. You know, at that point, I imagine, I mean, just for the sake of not following procedure, I mean, they wouldn’t be a part of that list, I imagine.
Madam Chair, I had a similar contact, what is today, Thursday? I had a similar contact on Tuesday this week from, I’ll call it, a group of interested stakeholders. And on behalf of that group, one person submitted a name. I responded back and said, “Thank you for that name. Here’s the additional detail we will need if you would like that person to be considered.” So either the policymakers’ offices can do that, or if you forward that to the clerk’s office, I will certainly make sure to follow up on simple names, or we need more detail.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carl.
So I think that the message here is encourage if people indicate an interest, that they submit enough information that kind of helps us fairly evaluate them, knowing that there may be people that are greatly qualified, but we may not personally know. And the intent is that we’re going to get that information that helps us know, why are you interested? And then what do you think you’re going to bring to the table? That’s your important experience.
Well, and, Madam Vice President, I mean, and I think, I mean, to your points, you know, sometimes what happens is that, you know, for somebody just to throw a name out there, I mean, you know, if it’s somebody we actually know, I mean, it makes it that much more difficult, because, you know, it makes it easier for them. But, I mean, if they’re not following our processes, we want them to follow our processes. Thank you, though.
Right. So we have, right, that more objective information to look at. Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank the clerk’s office for just turning this around so quickly and creating a process that we can all use. You know, I wanted to mention that, you know, this goes back to our original resolution back in April, when we directed staff to bring forward a policy for consideration and expressed our general support for paid sick time. And so I certainly think there’s space in this group for all kinds of different perspectives. But I wanted to note that, you know, we have a lot of folks in our business community who, you know, are open-minded about paid sick time. Many employers already provide paid sick time. And I hope that as we consider, as the council, the 10 individuals that we submit to this, we, you know, keep in mind that the purpose of this group is to shape and propose a policy for us to consider. And therefore, I really hope it’s not seen as sort of like opposed versus support, and that this group is made up of people who are at least open-minded to helping us craft the policy. Again, knowing that there’s lots of different perspectives out there, and this is just one way that folks will be able to participate.
Right. And I think I would take that more as a message to us as colleagues, in terms of appointments, and what is the anticipated product that we’re hoping that this group will help recommend. I’m not seeing other questions. Let me just double-check here. I’m not seeing other — oh, I’m sorry. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, I agree with Councilmember Bender. My biggest concern here is that both sides are just going to be beating each other down. And I do want people who are open-minded generally. That doesn’t mean definitively having taken a position, but open-minded. And so my concern is delineating between simply opposition and simply proponent, because, you know, there’s, I mean, there’s more than that.
And I’m sorry to jump in so much, but I just want to say, because this is sort of a little bit of the repeat of the conversation we had on Friday, the 23rd, when I think a lot of councilmembers expressed that this is not about appointing participants who may, quote, oppose a potential policy, and then support in a potential policy, and having them duke it out in a committee. This is about, and this is also not about lining up folks who may be on opposing views, but this is about trying to get a productive process where a variety of views may be brought forward that will help create a recommendation that helps us with a good policy proposal. So, again, I know it’s right now, setting up the workgroup is a time when we kind of have some hopes. And we will hope also we make good choices on the applicants, because that’s what has set us on our course. Mr. Carl.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I’m going to let this one sit for a while. We talked about what we want to receive on behalf of the council. This is the way to receive it. So, “The full slate of nominations is to be presented to this committee at its next regular meeting on November 18th and two weeks from today. Therefore, we’re asking that all applications be submitted to the clerk’s office by no later than close of business,” that’s 5:00 PM next Monday, November 9. It’s a short window of opportunity. “This slide shows the different ways that application materials can be submitted, whether by email, by fax, or through postal delivery, or in-person delivery at City Hall to the clerk’s office. The clerk’s office will then, as I mentioned, prepare a compilation of all of the applications and materials that are received, and provide copies to all councilmembers by November 10. Our goal in turning that around quickly is to give the council as much time as possible to review those applications and reach their decisions about which slate of nominations to bring forward the following week. In addition to the appointment processes, the motion you adopted directed staff to work on creating some operating principles that would be a framework for how the Workplace Regulations Partnership Group would operate. And at the request of President Johnson, I did prepare a very simple set of operating principles I’d like to briefly highlight. I also did connect with and partner with Deputy City Attorney Peter Gander and Deputy City Coordinator Nurya Rivera Vandermeide in preparing these. Copies of this material has also been distributed to your desks for broad categories in which these operating principles are grouped. First, being accessible to the public. The first operating principle that we’ve identified is that the work of the partnership group should be open and accessible to the public. We know that these policy proposals are of significant public interest, and we believe the accessibility of the partnership’s efforts should encourage community engagement. Therefore, we have incorporated an expectation that all of the business meetings of the Workplace Regulations Partnership must be open and accessible to the public. Notice of their business meetings must be made no less than 48 hours in advance, and must be posted to the city’s bulletin boards and website. We’ve used the term “business meeting” to reflect those public gatherings of members that are focused on its official purpose, that is, studying and developing policy recommendations related to earned, sick, and paid time off. This would not prevent the partnership from conducting other forums that may or may not be open to the public. For example, staff has identified a need to conduct an initial orientation, once members are appointed, to assure an even leveling and understanding of all of the issues amongst all participants on the range of policy issues that are involved in these matters. This orientation would engage only those members appointed to the partnership and key staff members. We’ve also empowered the partnership to determine, through its own rules, whether or not it wishes to allow for the acceptance of public comments at regular business meetings. These operating principles do not require that public comments be accepted, but it does leave that decision to the partnership group. The partnership is then free to set guidelines for how public comment would be accepted at its business meetings. The next major section is the Chair and the duties of the Chair. As part of the motion establishing this partnership workgroup, the council indicated that the partnership would select from amongst its members someone to serve as chair. Again, recognizing that the workgroup can form its own operating rules, we have, within the broad principles, established certain expectations for the position of chair. These include the responsibility for setting the agenda for each meeting, the responsibility for presiding at each meeting, which includes a commitment to ensure fair and balanced opportunity for all members to participate, and to impartially declare the will of the majority. Finally, the responsibility to perform any other duties that are assigned to the chair by the Workplace Regulations Partnership. And we have also provided, within these guidelines, for the selection of a vice chair by the partnership. The next group of guidelines deal with meeting procedures. There are some high-level principles outlined in your packets. These deal with the quorum’s group being set at eight of the 15 members, allowing the partnership to determine its own rules, allowing for a recorded vote when necessary, and providing for the disposition of the partnership’s records and papers. And finally, the fourth category deals with community engagement. As part of its work during a 13-week period, the partnership is required to engage the community in the development of its policy recommendations through the conduct of focus groups, listening sessions, and similar practices. We’ve included, within the general operating principles, that the city expects the partnership to adhere to the core principles of community engagement, which were adopted by the city in December 2007. I’ve included in your information packets a copy of the core principles for reference. And of course, we would expect that the partnership would have the ability to engage and get the support of our Neighborhood and Community Relations Department to assist in those types of community outreach efforts. Finally, the partnership is required to submit its final report proposing recommendations on policies related to earned, sick, and paid time off in writing to the mayor and the city council. Those policy recommendations are to be presented to this committee at its regular meeting, now scheduled for February 24, 2016. And assuming that the appointments are confirmed by the full council this Friday, and look our next cycle, and looking toward the presentation of a final report next February, that means that the partnership team would have approximately 90 days after appointment, approximately 13 weeks, to complete all of its work and to submit its final report. To assist the partnership in this work, a core staff team has been assembled under the leadership of Deputy City Coordinator Nurya Rivera Vandermeide, who would then serve as the primary point of contact for the partnership and lead coordinator of its work plan. In addition to serving as the primary advisor to the partnership, Ms. Rivera Vandermeide will be responsible for marshaling the resources necessary to support the work of the partnership group, and for ensuring that its final policy recommendations have been thoroughly vetted by the relevant professional staff in various departments. Additionally, we’ve called out specifically for the Commissioner of Health, Gretchen Musikant, and the Executive Director of the City’s Community Planning and Economic Development Department, Craig Taylor, to be members of the core staff support team, or providing for designees by those individuals to serve as members of the staff support team. And finally, we secured technical and administrative support from the offices of City Attorney and City Clerk, who will attend to the general operation of the partnership. It’s my expectation that, along with the final appointments to be presented to this committee at its next meeting on November 18th, staff would also bring forward final versions of these operating principles, all of which would be part of the final recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to the full city council for its decision on November 20th. And with that, I’ve concluded my presentation.
So, Mr. Carl, I have a couple of questions, and I just want to note, and I apologize that I forgot to mention this earlier, is I did get a message from the council president that she was delayed on some other city business. And she was the maker of the motion, along with Councilmember Andrew Johnson, on forming the partnership. So I just wanted to note that in particular. So I had a couple of questions, and I realize these may be questions that you don’t have the answer for right now, or that maybe you can help with, if you know, what would be the process for determining these. So I’m already getting, I would say, a fair number of questions about what is the full range of responsibilities of participants on the partnership? And included in that is not just the range of responsibilities, but the time commitment. And you have this clause in here, and all the materials we have, they’re over there. And I know that they will be attached to the agenda following this meeting, since this was a new item on the agenda. But you have the section that you verbally described to us about the community engagement piece, conducting focus groups, listening sessions, similar practices. Okay, so this is where I start to kind of question, what is the time commitment? It is one thing for the partnership members to direct staff to help do certain things, and it’s another thing to expect the partnership to attend every engagement event. And maybe some can, maybe some, you know, do have that time availability, but maybe others don’t, but yet they’re going to bring some valuable perspective. So I just, I’m unclear myself on what is the anticipated range of commitment, and how will that be determined, because that may affect who applies.
Madam Chair, excellent points. And as, at the staff level, as we’ve been thinking about this process, noting, as I said, there’s about a 13-week clock before this has to come back on February 24th. We expect that if the council finishes its appointments at the next council meeting on November 20th, that staff would immediately start that process of convening the orientation process, as we said, to do that level set across all 15 members. As part of that, we would outline the expectations that were outlined in the motion. So the motion describes that the partnership group is directed to engage the community through these different types of events or out forums. We would work with them to structure those. I don’t think there’s an expectation that all 15 members would have to attend any of these sessions or all of them. My expectation would be that the committee, through its own procedural rules, would designate a chair, or a subcommittee, or a group of individuals to attend. There’s not an expectation on the exact number of forums that have to be conducted. That’s entirely within their purview to decide how, when, who. And the staff would work with them to make sure that we provided the appropriate venues, that we provided the appropriate notices, that we had the right support infrastructure in place for the public outreach and community engagement efforts that they choose to lead as part of their work in developing policy recommendations to present back to this body.
Okay. That’s helpful. So my second question, then, and we do have at least one councilmember in queue as well, but my second question is about the product, the actual recommendations. And is there a thought on kind of how that will be set? So, as an example, I have an expectation that we’re not asking for a product where, you know, that kind of to Councilmember Frye’s point, where the committee votes, and then they say, “Well, just don’t do one at all.” We’re asking for something different. We’re asking for a recommendation on what, and I think the question of how specific we’re actually asking that recommendation to be is also important. There’s a lot of different range of what could come forward, to frankly, be very helpful, but it could be a range of things, from extremely specific to more general considerations that need to be incorporated into a policy proposal.
Madam Chair, I think all of your points are well-taken. I think that staff is in concurrence and would adhere to that guideline, and would be expecting, as part of our role, to support this workforce partnership, that we would be conveying those messages, we would ensure communication between the policymakers of the city and this workgroup, and assist them in bringing forward a report that has what I will term, and I know this is subject to interpretation, meaningful recommendations of policy matters on these subject matters, that then the council can take up and consider. I don’t think it’s our expectation that we expect the workgroup to come back with a well-drafted ordinance proposal, but rather a report that outlines their recommendations, their reasonings for those recommendations, and the support that they put behind it, so that this body then can work with that report to decide the next steps with respect to developing an actual policy.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you pretty much just asked my question, which is, are there any times certain? I, too, have been getting, in the inquiries that I’ve received, from low-wage employees and a lot of small business owners who are entering a very busy time of year, they seem most concerned or most hesitant because of time certain. And I know that with one of the values of Working Families Agenda And I know that with one of the values of Working Families Agenda being fair scheduling, it seems appropriate to try to get their own schedule set out. So, may I ask, Mr. Carl, is it your intent to have that assembled group decide their own meeting times, and how often they would meet as just a group, without, you know, maybe the planned community engagement or focus groups that are mentioned here? I know it says staff will establish a framework for the group's meetings, and so I'm just curious, do you plan to propose something, or are we going to leave it up to the members of this group?
Madam Chair, an interesting question from Councilmember Palmasano, and I think the answer implied, if not stated directly, is that this group determines their own schedule. The only hard and fast deadline is that the report pack needs to be by February 24th, 2016. Outside of that deadline, it's up to them to decide how often they meet, whether or not they decide to form subgroups to study specific issues, to conduct community outreach, how they want to structure themselves to operate most efficiently with respect to their time. Staff will be there, again, to support those decisions and to provide the appropriate revenues, noted, or venues, notice, and support that they require to be successful.
Madam Chair, one of the things that I had heard, and I don't remember who or what was the expectation, that there would be three meetings, or at least three meetings, is that, that doesn't seem to be outlined in the staff direction, or even in these recommendations that you put forward. Is, is that the idea that then, that there is no necessarily hard and fast, we will have three meetings with this workplace group? I'm not hearing that. I just wanted to confirm.
What I'm understanding is that the group will meet and help determine what is their actual meeting schedule, including how frequently they are willing to, to meet, to effectively put forward-